You may be seated. We'll call the members, please.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Herron, District Three. Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Addington at large.
Here.
All right. We do have a forum. Next item is to approve the agenda. I think we need to amend it to starts.
We need to remove item 10, the Scott County 4-H trip, and add in that place the number 10, the VJCCCA resolution. And those are the only changes I have.
Okay. Need to approve the agenda as amended. Do we have a motion to do that?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You're second. Any discussion? All three of them saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is approve the minutes from August 2nd, 2023. Had a chance to look at it. Hope you have. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented to you?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All three of them saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And I'll abstain.
Next item is the express period. I'll read the short statement, then we'll get right into that. The express period upon the meeting, when anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from, and the county, and/or organization you represent. The board mayor may not respond to anything you say, but will take everything you say into account in making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns to speak your business. Any act will be considered after the closest expression. So with that, before we do that, I have something I need to do. We have a plaque here. So I'm going to say to Anna Kincaid that she will come up to the podium for it. What this is, it's a presentation in appreciation of your 43 years of service to assist the Scott County as an employee of the Scott County Board of Supervisors from 1979 to 2023.
Ooh.
A long time. I worked 44 years in coal mining. I got you beat just by a little bit, so, but you've done well.
(laughing).
Just by a little bit. But with that, I will present this to you. I'll present the box idol to you. And thank you for what you do. I guess they may want to get a picture of me presenting this to you, so. Forty-three years, and thank you. Thank you. God bless you.
All right.
Forty-three years is a long time. It's a, it a, we really did appreciate what you've done and for the folks here in the county. But with that, we have one lady that's signed up for express, Miss Ellen Bailey. Is she here? She's not here? Anybody else signed up to start?
That's not me.
With that, anyone needing to speak, you may come to the podium and do so. Good morning.
Good morning. We're back. And all I want to talk about this morning is that.
Well, state your name for the members. We know who you are, but I'll see your way for the record.
Okay, I'm Peggy Thompson. I'm from Snowflake Road. And we got some grading done and some dust control from VDoc, which, you know, which helped. But anybody knows about a dirt road, anything they do is temporary. I mean, you know. And we appreciate what VDoc done. And we just want to make sure that we keep Snowflake Road on that. Take your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone?
Is this?
You're on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
We'll get your, your item number eight.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, we'll get there in a minute. Anyone else who needs to speak or wants to speak? All right. If not, we will close this expression period and go into a public hearing we have to conduct here. This next item is anything here in the express? Anyone got anything that you want to add? Before we get into that? Okay, good. A public hearing on the possible adoption of an ordinance to amend and reenact in its entirety the Scott County Public Procurement Ordinance to reflect the law as it now reads entitled 2.2, Chapter 43 of the Code of Virginia. So this public hearing is required to amend that to match what the state of Virginia has. With that, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? No one? Okay. Then we will close this expression period, and we'll get through this quickly. On the board here, any comments? Or if not, we don't have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Bricky has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Addington? I seen her hand go up. I heard your voice, so.
It's okay.
Any discussion? All three of them saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is Ms. Jan made here with hours to. Mr. Knapp, you'll come, please.
Okay.
All right. Don't delay till about half a minute. Say anything about it.
Thank you.
This is going forward and this is back.
Okay. Thank you. So I wanted to give you an update since I was here in July. You suggested I go to the Board of Education, and I did. And they declined to fund us because they said that they were funding the after-school program at the, at the schools here in Scott County. So I'm back again. And also, since I was here, we are now a 501(c)(3)C. We got that accomplished soon after I left. So I have another presentation. I just want to catch you up on what's been going on since July. So at the end of the summer, we had a really great celebration. We had, I think, 11 students in the Duffield class. And so this was what the classroom looked like. We have Tri- Trip there and Emmy, and we have Preet Soffe four. Last month in August, Grant O'Quinn joined us. Oops, I'm sorry. Wrong one. At the end of the term, we had storytime, a bookmark making, rock painting. We had a celebration there. And parents came and joined us, and we had lunch for them. And then I want to share with you some of the feedback. I want to read some of the parent reviews that we received. The first one says, "This program and Ms. Jenny have been amazing. We are very grateful for everything." And the next one says, "The program is great. We have seen Phoebe progress a lot since the program started. She went from reading on a first-grade level to a third-grade level and also reading the Bible in front of the congregation at church. I am so glad we signed her up for it. The teachers are awesome. Phoebe can't wait until Tuesday to get here. Love you all." And then the last one, "Megan has done awesome. She is talking more and interacting and learning so much more." I think about being able to talk in front of the congregation at church. That's a pretty big deal. So we have quite a bit going on right now. We have a new tutor, Grant O'Quinn. He joined us. He's a recent graduate from UVA Wise. He has a degree in history and a minor in education. He's now working for Shoemaker Elementary, and he's continuing to help us. But he has such a wonderful heart. The second time he worked with this little girl, he brought a gift bag for her. They have food and a coloring book and crayons in it. I'm so glad he joined us. And this is awesome. We are lucky. We have an artist that works with us, and she colored this. And we have a new slogan. It's called, "Reach Higher with Finals Tutors." And so we're going to get a lot of use out of that. We have a lot going on. We added another tutor for our Duffield class, Ms. Angela Ellis. She's an elementary teacher in Lee County. In October, we will be moving into our new location at 115 East Jackson Street in Gate City. So excited about that. We renewed the lease at the Pioneer Center in Duffield through December. Our classes began this week and will continue through December the 15th in both locations. A website is being created, and we have raised $2,741 from private donations. I have a bit of sad news I just learned about today. We apparently are not going to be able to move into that location because of a zoning issue. So unless we can get that worked out, we're going to be on the hunt for another location in Gate City, which is really disappointing. But hopefully, we can work that out. And so the Accelerated Learning Grant, I wanted to say something about that. It was a really good idea, but it just wasn't well executed. In a month's time, 34,000 parents applied for the grant, and they weren't happy. They, they were happy to have the money, but it was a mess as far as getting their invoices approved and getting connected with the tutors and that sort of thing. And they really pushed back, and the governor heard it. So in mid-July, he added another $30 million. So a total of $60 million for, for grant money. In my opinion, I don't think that new applications are going to be processed. I think they're going to process the ones that are pending. But I don't, I don't see new students being able to get money from that. And here's why I say that. So where did the money go? Almost 10,000 parents received the standard $1,500 grant. 4,716 parents had received the low-income qualified grant of $3,000. Today, 18,037 standard applications are still pending, and 1,789 low-income qualified applications are still pending. A total of $28.9 million total has been distributed. And of that, 10.8 million went to parents in Northern Virginia. They received the most grant, they had the most grant recipients, 37% of total funding. That's really a shame. That, that more of that money didn't make its way to our region. In order to receive the $3,000 grant, a family of three had to earn less than $74,580. And across the board, less than a quarter of the families who received a grant were eligible for the $3,000 amount. Most families in Scott County would have been eligible for the $3,000 grant. And I say that because during the school year 2022 to 2023, 77.33% of families who had children in Scott County schools were eligible for the free lunch program. Okay. I want to stop right here just a second to say, I think that the Accelerated Learning Grant was a really good idea. When we first heard about it, I started advertising, and we attracted parents, and we helped them apply for it and get the funds. So we are in a pretty good position right now. We're working with, most of our students have funding from the grant. But that's not going to continue. It won't, the funding is done in, in December. So after that, we will have to find a way to continue. But that's where we are right now. And so we have 20 students who have enrolled in our after-school program, which has started this week and will go through December the 15th. Of those 15 have funding. Five of them do not. The total cost, if they meet with a child just once a week for the entire term, is $375. So what I would like to ask for is $1,875 so that we can provide that for these five students. But there is no shortage of students who need help. And we have tutors that want to teach, or, excuse me, I should say, teachers who want to tutor. And as soon as we have space in Gate City, we'll have that worked out. So all we need is the funding. And I really wish that we could find a regional funding source so that we could help the students in Scott County and in this region, because I'm sure Wise County, Lee County, all the surrounding areas need this help. If you have ever been a student or have a student in your life who struggled academically, it's a terrible feeling for them. They, they feel like they're not good enough, that they're never going to be able to catch up. And we've been able, just four months, to make a big difference. They're much happier, and they feel like they can accomplish it. So I, I hope that you guys will consider funding us and help us if you think of any other ways that we can get money through grants or anything. And one, one more slide. I think, there you go. These are some of the kids from our summer class. So, thank you so much.
These are all Scott County kids?
Uh, yes. These are all Scott County kids. I do have some people from Kingsport who have called and want to help, but they're paying themselves.
All right. Comments or questions from the folks on board?
I'm just shocked that the school board didn't.
Me too.
I really am. I mean, I'm just shocked.
Mm-hmm.
Something you said, that they said they already funded the after-school programs. 25% of our budget goes to school system. We're funding what we're funding. And so I'm not, I'm shocked too that they didn't. At least maybe with offer me to hype away or something on it, so.
You know, I think maybe they think that we're competing with that after-school program. But we are not, because we're not doing homework help. We are trying to find the learning gaps that's keeping them behind constantly. And so perhaps they didn't understand that, perhaps I didn't do a good enough job explaining it. But we are not like what they're offering after school. And we're not really competing with private tutoring companies either, because the students in our area wouldn't be able to pay for that. In one of the articles that I listed there, a tutor in Northern Virginia said her starting rate is $600. That's starting. So we are providing this for very little money. And one of the senators, who was not in favor of the Accelerated Learning Grant, thought that we could do a better job if we went into the school systems and offered in-school tutoring. But the Finance Committee did a study about that and found that it would cost $268 million to do it that way. So I think that we are providing a big solution for not a lot of money.
This would fund it through December, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Have you contacted Delegate Kilgore about his need? Yes, ma'am. I've dealt, I've contacted him. I've contacted Morgan Griffin. I've contacted Senator Pillion. I'm going to have a chance to sit down and talk with Senator Kilgore, I mean Delegate Kilgore and Senator Pillion, I think, on the 20th of this month. They're coming to the Pioneer Center to find out what we need, so. That's good. I think, you know, if it, if it becomes a regional thing, then, you know, I think Delegate Kilgore should be involved in that. The, the tutor that we just added for our Duffield class is driving from Rose Hill. She's an elementary school teacher there. She said they didn't know about the program at all. I don't know how the information was delivered to the school systems, but it happened in May. You know, and students are out for the summer. So a lot of people in our area don't know about it. I think maybe the people in Northern Virginia kind of had a heads up that this was coming. You know, they probably are more plugged into what's going on at the state there. But it really is a shame that we didn't have more participation in this program here. And I'm glad that we have as many students as we have that we're able to help.
Do you have any idea what kind of after-school programs the school has now?
I don't. I think, I think it's called Century 21 or something, not Century something. But I think that it is a funded program. It's funded outside of the school board, I believe, through a grant.
Do y'all have to pay where you meet?
We do in Duffield. But it's very inexpensive. We pay $150 a month, and that includes internet and utilities.
Wow. That's great.
Yes.
It looks like a school board could give you a place to meet.
I don't know. Again, I think maybe they think we're competing. We are not trying to take anything away from the schools. I think the teachers are amazing. We are just, we have the time and the resources that they don't have to be able to work with students one on one. And that's what makes the difference.
I think it's a good program, I do. But I'm not so sure. Like I said, the amount of money that we spend is about, maybe not quite the close 25% of our total budget goes to school system. I know they have a lot of expense like everybody else, but I really hope that they would take this. I mean, it's about educating our kids. And that's what it's about, and that's what they're about. So anyway, I just.
Yeah, I was disappointed too. I really. But honestly, when I was, made the presentation to the school board, there weren't many members present. There was maybe five, so. And Mr. Ferguson wasn't.
Oh, six, yeah.
Yeah, he wasn't present that day either. But I know that he, I met him after that. So I know he saw the presentation. But my main contact there was Jay, Jason Smith?
Jason Smith.
Yeah. He's been really helpful. In fact, he provided the data to me about the 77.33%.
It's a good program. You're all stopped here. I mean, it's, it's what y'all, what do y'all think? I think it's a good program, and I hate that you funding. It ought to be easier to get, have to do what you have to do to get it. But anyway, you're all stopped. You're on the board. 1875 is the amount.
Mr. Man, it's worth noting that the building that they're occupying in Duffield is $150 a month is owned by the county. So we're, we're maintaining that building.
Could we waive that fee?
It's a separate board. It oversees the funders.
Could we, could we get them to waive the fee? That'd help sign that we could get them to do that. And I don't know how much that $150 a month means. It's pretty cheap. I mean, it's still a good deal. But that would help sign the thing. Any other thoughts here? Don't leave it up to me. Y'all chime in.
I mean, I just, I mean, I'll be honest. I'm just still shocked that the school board didn't step in and help that. I mean, $1,800 seems like a small amount for them, because that's their lane, is what I feel like. I mean, I feel like that, I feel like if we do that, we're out, we're overstepping a boundary. That, not a boundary, but a... And we're picking up a slack where they should be stepping in.
If I could just add one comment. Well, at the time that I spoke to the school board, it was in August, and we, we weren't really into our after-school program yet. And so I didn't have those numbers to present to them. I think I asked them maybe for a blanket $2,000, but, you know.
Yeah, $2,000.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts? I can entertain a motion to pay this. And if it doesn't, if we don't get a motion or don't get a second or whatever, it wouldn't pass. But I'll do that. If y'all want to discuss more, we will. But I'll entertain a motion to, to do that. And if not, we'll see what happens. We'll be able to motion to approve this $1,875. Well, it, without voting, it will die for the lack of a, of a motion or a second, so that's where it will end. And I, I really wish they had picked up on this. Like she said, you know, we're, we're treading into their territory which should be them. And so I, I don't know. If we could do it, it wouldn't be a big kill for us either. But I think the right thing would be for them to look at this more closely and to have done something with it. At least they'd have met with us or said, you know, maybe just hype away or something. You know, maybe we could have done something. Anyway, you pay off the lack of a motion, and that's, you know.
Okay.
All right. Good presentation. I like what you're doing. I really do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is to ratify $400 from the Board Continuity Fund for Services Travel and Stars. We've got the information up, if you would. We're talking to them.
Court Service Director had reached out to me. Because the state budget had not been finalized, they did not have their budget in place to be able to send one of their staff members to training in Williamsburg. So I reached out to the board. I did receive the majority that you would be willing to give them an additional $400 in their budget. So we just need to ratify that.
Okay. Need a motion on this $400 from the Continuity Fund. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Ms. Tipp made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All three of them saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is item 10, the VGCCA. It's an acronym for Virginia Juvenile Something. So anyway, Ms. Norris.
It's the Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act Resolution.
That is.
And you do have a copy in your packet. And this resolution, we did some research way back. It's been around 20 years. A similar resolution was done. But this is given. Washington County is the fiscal agent and always has been since the combining that made the Virginia Juvenile Commission. And the commission will distribute the funds. And the resolution says now they're forbid resolved by the Appalachian Juvenile Commission will participate in the VG, VJCCCA and accept funds appropriate for the purpose set forth in this act until it notifies the Department of Juvenile Justice in writing that it no longer wishes to participate. Washington County will combine with the counties of Smith, Lee, Scott, Wise, Buchanan, Dickinson, Taswell, and Russell, as well as the cities of Bristol and Norton, to form one combined plan with Washington County acting as the fiscal agent. The county administrator of Washington County is hereby authorized to execute a local combined plan on behalf of said localities. And I would just need authorization to sign this resolution to pass on to them.
And Washington County is the fiscal agent, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Do we have a motion on this resolution to approve it? Ms. Norris, you ready? Do we have a motion? Mr. Jeter made a motion. Mr. Chair made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All party folks say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is item eleven, bookkeeping. Ms. Vickers?
Please appropriate six hundred thirty-six thousand sixty-one dollars to radio equipment, long communications equipment replacement, one thousand dash nine four zero 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 dash four zero eight one zero four for Bank of America disbursement received and deposited to Treasury's office. Appropriate one thousand three hundred dollars and sixty-eight cents to park golf course merchandise for resale, one thousand dash seven one 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 zero dash four zero six zero nine nine for reimbursement, and appropriate two thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars to Sheriff's Office for repairs and maintenance of vehicles, one thousand dash three one two zero zero dash four zero six zero zero nine for an insurance claim.
All right, on the appropriation, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Mr. Bricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All party folks say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
While we are in bookkeeping section, I emailed you two grants for consideration of approval, and they're also in your packet. They're for the Sheriff's Office. The first one is a DMV selective enforcement alcohol grant in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. The match would be paid from fuel and maintenance of vehicles. We'll go toward that match, so I would need approval to sign that grant agreement.
Okay. Need a motion to allow Ms. Norris to sign that grant agreement? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Ms. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All party folks say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And the second one is also DMV grant selective enforcement police traffic services in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars, and the match for that would also be expenses for fuel and maintenance of the vehicles.
All right, do we have a motion on that grant? Allow Ms. Norris to sign. Do we have a motion?
Some of this, yeah.
Ms. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bricky, second. Any discussion? All party folks say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any other on bookkeeping?
That's all, unless I can do anything else.
Yeah, okay. All right, next, item, item twelve, as pain is here, performance. Ms. Tipton, if you would.
You have one appointment to the comprehensive policy management fee. It's a private provider with an expired term. You have one applicant, Jessica Key.
Do we have any nominations for this, uh, tomorrow's term? Do we have any motion? Any nominations?
I'll nominate first, Ms. Key.
Any other nominations? Need a motion nomination states vote back for motion. Do we have a motion?
I'm ready.
Ms. Chair made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All party folks say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Blanket table. County Attorney Adams, Ms. Caglin, we have anything?
I don't have anything today. I've been answering any questions, I think. Maybe Ms. Bailey, okay?
Yeah, she'll come get her in a few minutes, won't she? Are you awesome? Okay, we can do that. Uh, Ms. Bailey is here considering a tree at her, on her property. Do you want to come to the podium, please, on the, the tree issue y'all have? How can you do that?
Hello, good morning, everyone. I live at one thirty-four Elliott Street.
What's the name of the street?
Elliott Street.
Elliott Street, okay, I got you.
Some people call it Elliott Drive. Well, called Elliott Drive, and one of them is there's a tree in front of my house, and it is an old tree, old tree, and it's very thick, and it's dying. It's almost dead, actually, and it's falling. Part of it's ticked over and falling, and there are power lines above it, and the tree, if you, I have pictures of it in my cell phone. If you see the tree, it's...
Is that a tree?
Uh, at any, yes.
Correct.
And at any time, it can, a strong wind, or rain, or storm, has already knocked it down already. It's already, I have other pictures in my cell phone where it's falling down on the side, and what can happen is the tree can enter to the power lines and electrocute anyone in its area. There are children that play around this tree in the area. They're not supposed to, but you know how children are, they like to play. If one of those tree limbs, or that tree falls in a power line, falls on those children, they could be electrocuted. The trees fall in your home, my home, or the neighbor's homes, and electrocute us in our home. So, it is, or if anyone in the street, or they're falling in a car, electrocute in a car. It's a very dangerous tree. So, Appalachian Power has come out, and they have looked at the tree and designated it as a tree that needs to be cut down, and I can't pronounce this too well, Asplanda, but pronounce it right, Tree Experts.
You're, you're pretty good. I can't pronounce the D.
Yeah, maybe they're sounding different.
You just have the excuse. It, they've come out, and they're supposed to be working with Appalachian Power, but they say that they see the tree, they see it's a danger, but they say it won't be cut down anywhere, anywhere near soon. It might be here, it might be two, it might be three years, because they have a budget. Well, this is so dangerous. The next storm that comes through could actually just whoosh it over into the power lines, and the tree fall and electrocute the children, my, the, my house across the street, other homes on the block, and mind you, my area where I live is, is a mixed area. It's black and white, so it's not all black, and it's not all white, so it's a mixture of us together complaining about the tree. So, it's a, a, a group of people, a mixture, who are complaining. So, the children are white and black, they play together, love one another. We see people and not color, and they play around the tree, and they know they're not supposed to, but they like to play around the tree. And if it falls, it electrocutes one of the children, so we're, we're very concerned about this tree. And Asplanda has just totally ignored us, just totally put it off to one, two, three years because of the budget. And I've come here today to ask, I have more pictures, and I have phone numbers of Appalachian Power, the man that's working there, one of the people that's working at Asplanda. Now, the supervisor refuses to give his number to anybody. They refuse to give his number, so I can't contact him. I've called several times since I've been told this. This has been the last month and a half, I've been told this, and I can't, they won't return my calls. Asplanda, Tree Experts will not return my calls. I can't contact the supervisor who's over the whole operation, who told me about the budget. They refuse to give me his number, so I don't know how to reach out to them at this point. I called Appalachian Power, and they are very nice, but they are not giving me his number either. So, at this point, I don't know what's going to happen. It's going to be two years, three years. This could fall anytime, the next storm. So, I'm totally respectfully asking today, if you all could assist us in expressing to them how important this is, and assist us in convincing them to cut the tree now before someone dies, or someone's homeless, is demolished, or destroyed because of this tree. It's a huge tree. I have more pictures, and I do have phone numbers for Appalachian Power, and one of the people that works for the Asplanda Tree Experts, but I just could not, they refused to give me the supervisor's number. They just would not give me his number, so that's the best I have.
That tree needs to come down. I'm just looking at it, I tell you it does. Uh, that's a pretty big tree, solid tree. Uh, could we do something, write a letter to them or the board that they expedite this, get that done quickly? Sally, be free to chime in. What do you think, I mean, to do, write a letter from the board to get them to... Your all-stopped, I mean, something needs to be done with that.
Yeah.
It looks, it looks like it's on VDOT, and I wonder about the Town and Gate City. Have you contacted VDOT, whose property it may be on?
Well, it belongs to, it's family property. The, the person that owns it across the street is my family, so we all own the properties together. I've told them that it's perfectly fine for them to, we're all in agreement for him to, for them to cut the tree, so there's no rope loss. We're all in agreement for him to...
Well, those trees, like that, especially that power line, that's, the power company should take that tree down. They do it all the time. If it's in danger, falling and taking down the power line. Uh, but your all-stopped, I mean, we, we can get a, formulate a letter from the board to expedite this as soon as they can to get this down.
I do wonder about VDOT. I mean, you know, it's right next to the road.
It is, I mean, it looks like it'd be on the right of way.
But, and I have Appalachian, or I have, uh, Powell Valley Electric. They're always cutting trees, and they don't let them get on the lines, and that just does not look safe.
If you looked at it personally, Bill, did you take these pictures?
Yes, I took these pictures.
So, if those power lines aren't dangerous, if they fail, they would definitely take them out?
Yeah, it's definitely a hazard tree. A lot of dead limbs, all the limbs on it. It's a big oak tree, thirty-inch-plus oak tree that's dead. Uh, I'd worry more about the vials falling off than the tree top itself. Of course, the root system's going to be deteriorating, it could fall over. Has every kind of vine you can imagine on it. Poison ivy, uh, Virginia creeper, cinnamon vine, uh, all the way up through it, which indicates that it's rotting, the vines are eaten. Uh, so it's, it's definitely a hazard tree.
Since you've taken that picture, it's fallen down. We had a storm. Let me show you this one, but it's fallen, it fell down here on the side since the storm. It fell, it just crashed part of it, and fell down.
You see the, it's, you see how big the, the limb is, it's bad.
Yes, I took these pictures last week.
Last month?
Oh, that was, no, I didn't know when you took them. I, I thought you took them at another date. No, this has been there for quite some time. This wasn't last week, so I bet correction.
We can get, uh, our county attorney, Ms. Caglin, Ms. Norris, to formulate a letter that we approve, and, uh, and get this, get to that pretty quickly. And maybe even send the letter to VDOT, too, if it's their tree, and, uh, so, maybe they come to something, but...
They're willing to coordinate whoever's responsible.
Penny, I think Avon Frenchler does that for Appalachian Power. I think he goes down and checks trees.
That's Lance's husband, right? Is he, is he retired now?
No, he's still working.
Still working, okay. Yeah, let us see what we can do. We'll, we'll formulate something, and, uh, 'cause I, I don't see it done sooner than later. If they can't, this can't wait two or three years or whatever it would take normally to get to it. That, that needs to come down now.
Thank you for correcting me. Thank you.
It's definitely a job for a professional crew.
Yeah.
Any volunteer crew or church crew shouldn't be following...
Well, it probably do with cherry pick, they take it down piece at a time, you know, because you could cut that tree off, and once you have to bring it down with a cherry pick.
Do you want the numbers that I have for the people?
Yeah, sure, we can.
Thank you.
That's all we can do. I'll have, I'll, I'll help you and get that done. Thank you, ma'am. But we'll do that, we'll get the folks here to formulate a letter. Let's go ahead and vote now to approve that, so we can't take formulation on it, to submit a letter, uh, if you want to do it to the power company and VDOT, we can, to both of them. But anyway, we need to entertain a motion to approve a level formulated by our staff to be sent to the, uh, the correct people. Do we have a motion to do that?
I'm not sure. VDOT wrote through there, or is it a city, town?
Wouldn't, wouldn't hurt to sit at VDOT and, and city.
Right.
Okay, all right.
I agree.
Send, so send it to three places?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I agree.
So, you made a motion. Ms. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Bricky, second. Any discussions? All party folks say an aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. So, we'll see what happens with that. Our next item is item fourteen, claims. Ms. Norris.
The claims are in your packet. The general fund balance after the September claims is five million forty-one thousand two hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. As you can tell by the comparison chart, we're above where we were at this time last year. For the claims that are over five thousand, that's on the back sheet, we had Creative Energy that was grant-funded, ten thousand dollars. Duffield Fire and Rescue, ten thousand dollars. WM Corporate Services, that's Waste Management, thirty-eight thousand two hundred nine dollars and forty-seven cents. Baker Tilly, eleven thousand seven fifty-eight seventy-five, that was for the salary study, final payment. Civic Plus, five thousand five fifty-two forty, and Tyler Technologies, um, for maintenance for the Munis Software, seventy-nine thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and forty cents. And Bank of America, the first debt service payment on the digital radio systems, a hundred fifty-five thousand six fifty, six sixty-five ninety-eight. A total, or lea, or total over five thousand was three hundred ten thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars. Uh, claims for the month, early cents totaled three hundred eighty-one thousand four seventy-seven forty-one. Current claims, six hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-three cents. So, total claims for the month that need approval, one million seventy thousand dollars, four hundred, one million seventy thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. Okay, talk to that.
That's all right, we're good.
Waste management. Bill, is it? Are we getting a lot more waste? Is it going up or staying at the same?
It's, uh, fluctuates compared to last year. Uh, one month will be a few, uh, times louder or, or heavier. It's nothing significant one way or the other. Uh, our, our bill has dropped a little bit because we're doing some direct hauling, uh, to the landfill with our, some of our packer trucks throughout the week.
Something I guess I can talk about here, Bill. I talked to Bill about the Town and Gate City, if they would direct haul. Except the landfill, it would be a big saving, it wouldn't be that much additional to them, but it'd be a big savings to us if they would do that. So, hopefully, we'd work out something with them to, to do that, red hauling to the, to the transfer station, have to handle it and haul it off. It would be a big cost saving if they would direct haul.
It would. It would save us about eleven thousand dollars on the trash that Gate City's hauling to our transfer station that we're having to pay to haul across the same road through Gate City to the, to the landfill.
And so, Bill, Doc said it'd cost him about maybe an extra thousand dollars to save us eleven thousand, so hopefully, we'd get with him, Bill, and try to see if they can start doing that, and it would be a big savings to the county if they were direct hauls. They're going...
We, we worked with Weber City, and they agreed to do that with our contractor.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a prediction that our trash will increase over the next few months. It's, as you know, Gate City and Weber City have come up with trash cans that are city-owned, and they will not pick up boxes. They will not pick up anything beside of the trash can. Well, last month, I thought I'd check them out, so I set a box full of other boxes. It was full beside of my trash can. They picked up the trash can and didn't pick up the box. I made two trips to our, our waste, our dumpsters the past month, so... And in Weber City, I think that there's no charge in Gate City for the first can. You pay five dollars a month for the second one if you need it. Weber City, I think, is charging fifteen dollars a month, and I've heard several people say, I'll just haul my trash off. So, that's just something we'll, you know, keep an eye on. Interesting.
I could, I can follow up, uh, once I get the numbers for the landfill for this month, and, uh, let you know if I see any increase. Uh, and like I said, it always fluctuates up and down, uh, compared to last year. Uh, if there's a significant increase, I'll let you know.
I bet you're right, Michael.
Yeah, the cans are not all out yet. I think the, the city parking lot's still full of them down here. I just went, well, they brought mine when they came to get the trash one time, but not, they're not all out yet, and I think when they do get out, we're gonna have another problem.
All right. Any other discussion before we make a motion to...
Is that something, is that something you can take the trash service or not?
No, you have to take it.
You have to take it.
Yeah, you have to take it. You pay for it monthly through your water, sewer, and your trash.
What about Weber City?
Weber City, I'm not sure. I do know, I think they're paying fifteen, aren't they, Sally?
I think so.
Fifteen dollars a month.
It's, it is electric. You sign up for it, you pay for it. If you don't want it, you don't have to sign up.
In both places?
No, only in Weber City.
Only in Weber City?
And it is not on their water bill, 'cause they have Scott County PSA. There's this direct bill.
Any other discussion before we entertain a motion to pay the bill? If not, need a motion to pay this one million seventy thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents, do we have a motion to do that? Ms. Tipton made a, a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You're second. Any discussion? All party folks say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Ms. Lance, you have?
Yes, I have just two things. The first one I laid, um, with your folder this morning, the EMS agencies through the Rescue Squad Association has in the past been paying for their AED, uh, maintenance each year. This year, those have... This year, those have increased in cost. They are three hundred and ten dollars each. And we have eleven of those countywide. So the total cost would be thirty-four hundred and ten dollars. And the Rescue Squad Association is asking that, to see if the county would pay that this year. And that includes maintenance, checking each AED to make sure they're still in good operating condition and any software updates that are needed would be included as well. And that's three for Duffield, three for Nicholsville, and five for Scott County Life Saving Crew.
An AED is an automatic external simulator, so that's what they're talking about. An AED is what it is. And that would come from our contingency fund if we pay this.
You could pay it from there, yes.
Anybody else thoughts?
Ms. Starks?
Yes.
Could you say that again? You said three for Duffield.
Three for Nicholsville. And five for Scott County.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more comments or thoughts on this three thousand, four hundred and ten dollar payment to the association?
You said this is just for this year?
Yeah, for one year. The invoices are attached. The contract date is October first, twenty twenty-three to nine thirty, twenty twenty-four. So if this was something next year's budget committee and then the full board wanted to put in the budget, we could, if it's something you want to continue, to help the Rescue Squad Association with.
When it comes to the fire department rescue squads, we're gonna do what we can do. And I don't, this is not, it's a doable amount, I think, that we probably need to do this, but I just want to vote, but it's my thoughts on it. Anybody have any thoughts before we entertain a motion? Not entertain a motion to pay this? David Gilbert, he's the Scott County Life Saving Crew in a long time. We're putting along, so...
Paul, make a motion, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper saying aye? Aye, opposed. And that would come from our contingency fund.
Yes.
And the only other thing I have, I just want to mention that the household waste disposal is gonna be in the Gate City Town Parking Lot on Saturday, September sixteenth from nine to three. So if any of the citizens have any paint or pool chemicals or any of those type things that you normally don't take to solid waste convenience centers, that's the day to take it to the Town Parking Lot in Gate City, Saturday, September sixteenth from nine to three.
Here's and now, break it out.
Is that what I'm speaking? Kick it around on brown. All right.
I'm gonna write that down, Bill. Write it down, bring it out.
Anything else, Ms. Starks?
That's all I have.
Moving on along. Next item is item fifteen, report from our EDA. Mr. Phil Boris here, if you would, John. How's your day until now?
Well, I think y'all setting a record here. First time I've spoken this early in a long time. We'll get to pull that in just a minute. Then you have the TVs turned on here.
I'm ahead of it.
Are you got them on? Morning, thanks for the opportunity to speak and appreciate what y'all do and the help with economic development. And just kind of run through your presentation this morning. Two things that you may or may not be aware of. Of course, the new Dollar Tree family, a Dollar is in, under construction in Duffield. And, you know, we have, we would help with that is they had a couple of DEQ issues and they also had, let them know about the Enterprise Zone and let them know, you know, basically who to talk to at the county offices as far as building codes. So that's some things that we do. And besides the, just the regulating of that one works, so... But they are, they started construction. The building is partially up and they'll be working on the inside. Hopefully they'll get that finished before the end of the year, but I don't know their schedule, so we'll hopefully see that right beside Hardee's in Duffield. And that county didn't own that land, that was owned by Hardee's. So they worked out a deal with Hardee's on that to get that property. Rear side, we continue to work with Landstar Development on the project. And we, of course, he's been to EDA meetings. We have another meeting scheduled with them this afternoon. And we'll be meeting at their offices and talking through some issues on design and layout. And so we're still working on that. The initial plan showed, of course, the housing on the rear side of the property, which is below the Teletext building in the lower parking lot. So that's what they're focusing on now. And we'll continue to work with Landstar on that piece of property. Nicholsville Farmers Market is another thing that went back and forth. Of course, we were gonna work, you know, as y'all well aware of, at the county park there, but ended up, we're working with the town of Nicholsville. I appreciate Jeremy's help, who's not here this morning, but he was really helpful in this process. And twenty-five thousand from board supervisors through the urban funds and then twenty-five thousand from the Virginia Department of Aid Grant Program. They will be able to construct a facility there, which will be beside the Nicholsville Fire Department. We have signed an MOU with the town and the town has one proposal and waiting on another. And I noticed that they had yesterday's passing through, they have stakes where they kind of marked out as a facility, but they've already started marketing a farmers market. They have one there from two to seven on Saturday already. So they'll continue and maybe hope to have another evening. And this will be really great next year for the farmers. They may not get to utilize it a lot this year, but next year it'll be really good. Now, they do have a couple that are setting up Saturdays, so I encourage you to go up for a Saturday and get you some flowers or whatever. There's some great stuff up there on Saturday. Devil's Bathtub Project, this is a total project on this and the majority of the money came from Virginia Department of Energy. So it's three hundred and fifty-three thousand on this Devil's Bathtub. And the trailhead parking area, we were, we were working with the Department of Forestry on that. And that was advertised back in July of twenty twenty-two. Didn't have enough funds. However, recently, Virginia Department of Energy had some additional funds on another project. They put some additional funds on this and now we've advertised that again. We advertised it last week. That invitation to bid was issued on August thirtieth and hopefully we'll get those bids in and we'll be able to improve the parking area. That is all national forest land, it's not all Scott County land.
John, that's up there, Saturday and Monday. The parking, our county park was packed. There wasn't any place to park. They were parking everywhere. And both days, it was, I understand so many cars. And I used to talk to people and they, I don't know, it's just, it's really getting more and more popular. And I ask them, would y'all recommend this? Oh, absolutely, we love it. And one guy been out before, it was the fifth time, but I believe that county parking lot was, wasn't a place to park. People parking away from it in the grass, except if there was that many people there. Then I went on up and they were lined up again, even up toward the entrance. They were along the road up to there.
So they were parked along the roads?
Well, they had no place to park them. It's that busy. And the campground there above, looked at it and they had a couple of campers there and there were a lot of people in tents and stuff too. So there, people utilizing that campground too that, that the mates or the flights had put in. So it's pretty popular, people that are going to.
So they have been working on the Appalachian Conservation Corps. They work with national parks, a lot of, or national forests and national parks, a lot of places, but they are working on that. This is the parking area on that top picture I was telling you. That is the parking area. That's the steps that goes up to the trail where you start the trail. If you're coming from a county parking lot, you don't take those steps, you just walk straight up the trail. But that's the first crossing and what they did on the first crossing was just move rocks around in the, in Stony Creek there to improve that crossing. So that's what they were doing on a lot of the crossing is just to improve the path across the water. And then what they're doing, you can see the person on the right, they're actually built stair steps. And these stair steps are built to get around one of the crossings. So the crossings, they will decrease the crossings, they'll cut those in half of Stony Creek. And Danny remembers how many crossings there are. So they'll at least be half, maybe more. So these steps will go up a mountain a little ways and then down, but there are steps on the other side too. So it's a little more, a little more difficult trail than it used to be, you know, and mostly you just walk through the water, but it's a little more difficult with steps. This was very hazardous area here. This is closer to the Devil's Bathtub. And I walked through this with Virginia Department of Energy and the National Forest people. So this rope, you would actually hang on to and then kind of slide around that rock. And that was a very hazardous area. And so what they did there is put install steps to go around that and then you walk on top. And then this is the view from the, those tops that are top, the walkway down to the Stony Creek. So just right above that water there, you see at the bottom of that picture, is the Devil's Bathtub straight through. And it's not too far from there. So that's that little waterfall right below the Devil's Bathtub. So a lot of work has been done. It's a lot of hand digging, a lot of tedious work that these Appalachian Conservation Corps is doing. And they have, they've had a crew there and they, if they're working there, they've got another nine day period they're supposed to come in and work. They usually camping out on the county property there or beside the county parking lot. And then go up there and do the work and then come back and then they don't be camping there and staying there. So they really enjoyed that. I've asked how that worked out. They appreciated us having an area and appreciate the wireless where they could, you know, connect to the internet. And they were really pleased with, you know, what was provided, a lot of places they go to and all like that. Any questions on that? So we'll continue to work. Hopefully the bids we get in, we'll be able to improve the parking lot and spend additional, what money's left on that parking area and get this project closed out. TVA Workforce Invest, this is a grant through Tennessee Valley Authority, economic development side of that. So they provide that to us to help with the workforce, investing in workforce on the TVA side. So if you're looking in Duffield, it's really as you go by Hardee's and you cross the river, it's on that side. So that's where this money has to be focused on. So we went and worked with Mountain Empire Community College and tried to do, you know, make it more regional. Of course, there's people that come to Duffield, they're working from Y, Scott, Lee, all over the place. So make sure that we include them in this, in this process. So we will work with them and try to find ways to spend additional money on the workforce, on the Workforce Invest. Scott County EDA, this is a rural business development grant. It used to be the rural enterprise grant to the rural development. So we get money from them to actually loan out to small businesses. So forty loans have been approved to date. That's seven hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars for small business loans. And if you look at those loans, that's attributed, you got eighty-six employees, eight of those tourism related, twenty-two retail, and then ten support businesses. And that includes four new loans approved in twenty twenty-three and a couple of those that y'all aware of, of course, is the campground at close to Devil's Bathtub. And then we've got a new glamping site that's on the Clinch River that they're working on now. So really interesting that made a lot of these tourism connections here and where they're gonna be staying in that glamping site overlooking the Clinch River. And of course, this is next to the Devil's Bathtub, it's a key area. So those are focused on the key assets. The Clinch is a key asset. Devil's Bathtub is a key asset. Carter Falls is a key asset. It's great to focus on those key assets in the county. So we received additional funding for this from a hundred and sixty-three thousand. That goes through USDA. That makes three hundred, about three hundred and sixty-three thousand that we've received from USDA for small business loans. So we've actually been replenished two different times with the first ninety-nine thousand we received from USDA that has been replenished. So you can see that money at three hundred and sixty-three thousand, it's already turned over almost twice in seven hundred and forty-four thousand loans. Ribbon cuttings, had a ribbon cutting at Maple Tree Bookstore here in Gate City recently and not had any others since the last meeting. We just try to do it between this meeting and the last in our presentation, so... And then the VC to capital grant program, they're working on that now. Small Business Development Center works with small business clients. So anybody that's interested in small business, we refer them to the Small Business Development Center at Mountain Empire Community College. Their services are free. They go through a business plan process. That business plan, then they use that, they can either, they'll go to C Capital maybe to get a grant or they may come to the EDA for a loan. They have to work through the Small Business Development Center first. So we've had fifteen Scott County businesses on the C Capital side receive grants in twenty seventeen for a total of a hundred and forty-five thousand on small businesses. And then we continue to, of course, market the county and market our assets of economic development. We continue to work. We've got three active prospects right now. We've had a site visit over the summer and we've had at least two or three interested in space. And some of the other things that we do that maybe you're not aware of is BFB needed some additional space to store some equipment. We were able to work with Pioneer Center and to get them additional space right across the road because they need a loading dock. And we're working with Temper now because they're potentially looking at a rail site. So that's some of the additional things that we work on that you may or may not be aware of. Any questions?
Anything that property dug out that they'll pick property, anything? Anybody looking at it or anything?
We've had a couple of people interested and actually got working with two different leads, BEDPs looking at. It's an asset because we only have two buildings that size in the whole region. There's not many in southwest Virginia that size. And the only one that's comparable to that would be the St. Paul building and they've got two leads on theirs as well.
Do you think the inland port will help market that?
The inland port will help us all. It'll definitely, a lot of people don't realize that either, that Temper gets material from the port. That'll definitely help, definitely help the inland port if they can just drop it there and then they can pick it up from there. They don't have to go pick it up and pay delivery all the way from Virginia Beach, all the way, or the port, all the way to here.
What about the houses at Fair Side? Do you have any timeline when they're gonna start building up?
I'll have a timeline. Hopefully I'll find out something today, but I don't have any timeline starting today. They've been working on the plan and they continue to do that, so hopefully we'll find out additional information.
What about the Teletext building? Anybody interested in it?
No, no active leads on that right now. But I mean, he's working on a plan for that too, as you well know.
Has anything happened at Farstone on the base?
Yeah, we've, we've got to meet with him and just found out just a while ago, Chairman Seig, so we'll kick do it today, so we'll make another day. We're supposed to be with him this week.
John, let me bring up one more thing. And I don't know if it's the right place or not to do it, but three or four years ago when I first came on the board, I said, we don't get a whole lot from Lenawisco. And at that time, I didn't know about the disadvantaged, advantaged sections of Scott County where, of Gate City, Weber City is considered advantaged because they group us federally with the tri-cities. And I would say only three fourths to two thirds of our county is like that. The rest is considered disadvantaged. Okay, saying that, to ask you, I've been wondering, you know, regionally, we're involved in a lot of programs. The casino, no... The Casino, Norton on the hill there, I forget the name of it.
Yeah, Project Intersection.
Yes. Also, the small nuclear reactors that are coming around. They're looking at foot mineral. I think that would be an excellent site. And I've read up on nuclear reactors and they are safe and we should promote this. But what I'm wondering is about the regional projects. How do they determine how much money goes to each county that's involved? Is it by population?
They could, we, we actually have a formula that was approved, I think, by y'all earlier. And we can send that out. It's the RIFA, you know, the formula that they use. It's a percentage. And you can partner, decide to partner on a project or decide not to partner on a project except to the board individually. I mean, Project Intersection is the, I guess, the initial one. Say, but if we want to go to use the RIFA and partner with Lee County on the project, then figure out how to split those revenues. But some of the revenue has to be for that locality where it is so they can have water for infrastructure. Or I mean, money for infrastructure, not water, but money for infrastructure. So that's, that formula though, we can share. That's no problem at all. So it's based on that.
What, I wonder what the formula is based on. Is that the population? And when it was derived, do you have a freedom note?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I can't remember though. I had to pull that back in. But we can, we'll just send it out.
Tell send it to everybody. I remember the host locality gets a bigger portion.
Right. The host locality does, yes.
I don't remember exactly because that's been maybe five years ago.
I don't think our people really in Scott County really realize how much we get back from regional programs and, and investments going on. But I still do not agree with Colin, our area advantaged.
That you were distressed.
If distressed is, is the word, yes. And, and all the other counties in Norton are distressed, including Wise County. But this area is not. And to compare us to the tri-cities, I, I just don't think that's correct. I don't know how it could ever be.
It's a federal thing is what happened, is the federal doing it. We're considered part of the Kingsport metropolitan area. Not to have, a Lenoysco board that has come up, but they always said, well, Lee County got it, Wise County got it, City Norton got it, Scott County did it because of this, the way where county been part of Kingsport. And so, yeah, part of the county is good, part of the county is not. But they consider it as a non-distressed county.
And the chairman or the executive director of Lenoysco has a formula for that. You can ask him about that. And he, he has that. I don't remember that off the top of my head. That's taken into consideration as to what is distressed and what is not distressed. And I agree with you, Mike. I mean, it costs us a lot of funding.
Yeah, it does. And people need to know that we are getting a lot of money back from regional projects. But this, this section, this, this distressed area, I just, I just don't agree with that.
Let me tell you something that's happened. And John, and I've talked to you about this. They had a meeting of all places in Boston. The Department of Energy People, the Davis guy went, pulled this nuclear stuff. And I had a question, why the county administrator from Wise County was invited? And I said, is the decision already been made? And the one from Wise County said, no, but I think it has. Because I said, our county administrator wasn't invited and it was by invite only. Why did the county administrator from Wise County go get the invite and the stars didn't? And so I questioned that. And I said, and I asked the other Killbore, has the decision already been made as to where this nuclear thing is going to go? And he said, no. And I'm sure he told me correctly. I mean, but I think it has. I think it's higher up than him that the decision is made with Wise County. Why would their county administrator be invited and our county administrator was not? And so they said, when I questioned that, they said it was by invite only. That's my point why, you know, why was the Wise County administrator invited? And so I don't know. It's just maybe a pre.
Well, yeah, we also got to look at that too, is the, the other side of that is you got to look at that could be a reasonable project. You know, that could be, come back to the RIFA. Then it could be a sharing revenue project. So I don't know how they're gonna, you know, do that.
Well, here's my take. Wise County got the $2 billion power plant. They're getting about $6 million a year in taxes from that power plant. And they've got three prisons, two colleges. We're blessed to be close to Kingsport. We really are. The number of people that lives here and works in Tennessee, we're very blessed to have them that close. But still, it's not right for them to, for this to keep happening. And I know it's going to be based, I think, Department of Energy is going to say it's a coal mining site is what it's going to be. And I don't know if Duffield is ruled out or not because it's not a coal mining site. It's the old foot mineral mine. But still, that, it'd be a perfect, I mean, I've been underground there twice and looked at it. I'm very familiar with underground workings. I did it most of my, my professional life. But anyway, I don't, I hope it's not a pre decided about where it's going to go. As far as that nuclear people has an issue with that, but it's the same technology they use on submarines and aircraft carriers and stuff. And it's very safe. They've never had an issue that I, if they have, they're set on it. But it's, it's a very, very safe way to make power. And so I'm hoping that asset will come to this county. But like you said, the revenue sharing part of it, I think that would happen. It didn't happen with the power plant in Virginia City. That was Wise County deal only.
And they're still distressed with all the things you named. They're distressed and we're not.
Well, getting that $30 million, that complication sound at the college, you know, that kind of stuff they're getting, a 30, 35 million or something. And it's a great facility. They need that. My daughter would school there. My granddaughter would school there. I'm not knocking that. But it seems like it's, this thing keeps going to them. And so where does Lee County or Scott County or these, you know, Dixon Russell, where do they play into this? I think Dixon County is out of the picture on this nuclear thing. But anyway, to me, it, you know, are we being looked over as far as being a potential site for this? To be a big boost in our tax revenue to get that.
And we're kind of preaching to the choir, but preaching to the US, the American people of Scott County. I, I don't know where to go with it, you know. It's federal and where, where do you go?
Yeah, and talking about your federal, you're talking about the federal designation. That's probably through ARC. ARC does the stress. And we have been distressed. It's not that we haven't been, but the last few years we've been transitional. So, you know, do you want to be distressed or you want to be transitional? It's all funding. I mean, we could still apply for funding. That doesn't guarantee that we'll get it. But we have to have a better match. So in other words, if you're distressed, it's a 2080 match. Then if you go to transitional, it might be 3070 or 5050. I'm not sure where the break is. But we, we could still apply for the funding, but we may not get it because we're competing with distressed counties. We were the only county in ARC, besides Washington County in southwest, that I, I can recall that was not distressed. Russell County was even distressed. So we, distressed, I mean, we've got money from ARC before. We've got money for the Carterfold back a long time ago for that. The building in Duffield, named projects for ARC, Daniel Boone Turbine Center. So they've been, they've put money in because we had been distressed.
The presentation. Thank you. Any questions for Killbore? Thank you. Anyway, I mean, the stuff I said, just an opportunity to say what I did. I wanted to say that about this modular nuclear modular site, something that I got my, my two cents worth in. One way or the other, I got it in. All right, we're down toward the end. Comments, requests, recommendations for the board? Mr. Deter, you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Tippin?
I'm good.
Mr. Hart, you have here. Mr. Ricky?
I'm going to brag on VDOT. I'm, I'm down on some, this time I won't brag on a little. Last time I complained to them about the monsoon gap and those trees downland everywhere. The next day or two, they were down there working and they, they actually cleaned the trees up. It looks a lot better. It doesn't look real good, but it looks better.
There it is.
And Sarah Circle down in Downlawn, they came down within a couple of days and cleaned out two or three corridors. And I guess we're waiting to see what he does when it rains with her. So I'm going to brag on VDOT a little.
Thanks, Sarah. Ms. Hoot?
Um, have you been, Diane?
Is that it?
I don't have anything.
All right. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. And two, VDOT's been doing some stuff in Dunn Gannon tonight. They put a couple of drainage pipes, took a tree down that was ready to follow their Baptist church. They have done some things and so they, they are. One thing that's happened, if you drive between Dunn Gannon and Blackmore, you see they're putting, I guess the power company is doing that. But they're putting all the new power lines up there and put three page of power out through there. And I think the move is, is to get the power lines close to the highway. So if you have, have an issue, then get to it quickly. Some places, they go up to the woods and all this stuff, can get to them. It's hard to fix. But they're doing that. They spent a lot of money up through there, putting that, putting those poles in and hitting the power lines out next to the road where they can get to them. So I do commend what they're doing. Same thing, like I said, VDOT, I think they're, they're doing what they're doing.
If I could add one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I just remembered, the one thing that I'm still pushing for, and it may take a letter from us, maybe suggesting that they do that. Last fall, VDOT told me that they would paint lines down here at the intersection. Going out of Gate City where you go Food Line Hill and the Big Stone. There are no lines in that intersection. And it, it's hard to follow where you need to go when you're coming off the hill. I've seen people going out of Gate City and they'll go all the way over in the right-hand lane as they're going under the red light. And people are coming off the hill trying to go to Kingsport. It's really dangerous down there. And I talked to the town of Gate City and I don't know if that helped any. So eventually, if we don't get something done soon, we may try to send a letter.
All righty. Aaron 25 makes that new record.
Mr. Man? Mr. Deter's question earlier about the solid waste this month and increase. The guy sent me the numbers down and compared to last August, we have a decrease of 661 tons compared to last August. Now, that's equivalent to about 33 packer truck loads, EVs perspective on that. I don't know why. There's nothing that can point at to say why that is. And it may be next month compared to last, last October or so.
It's pretty too hot for everybody to get.
Maybe. Weather certainly, weather certainly confused with those numbers about the month. Anyway.
Good information. Thanks. All right. Nothing else. We will adjourn to October 4th. Everybody have a good, safe week and month. We'll see you next month.